Hug.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Melton is absent, Rowe.
Yep.
Bagley.
Harding.
Mr. President.
We stand in pledge and remarks by Councilmember Harding.
This is a little lengthy, but I'll try to get through it quickly. One of my favorite bands is R.E.M. And the events of the past week and yesterday brought to mind one of my favorite songs from the group. It's titled "It's The End Of The World As We Know It." The first verse starts with, "That's great. It starts with an earthquake, birds, snakes, and aeroplanes, and Lenny Bruce is not afraid." This last week, we had earthquakes in New York, and an engine cover came off the Southwest Airlines during takeoff in Denver. Perhaps R.E.M. would have included a lyric had they had a word to rhyme with eclipse. Yesterday, the sun rose in the east, was intercepted by the moon, causing an eclipse that seemingly dominated the news cycle for days, and even brought out some predictions that the world as we know was about to end. That got me to thinking about past predictions that the end was near. How about this one? Our earth is degenerate in these later days. There are signs that the world is speedily coming to an end. Bribery and corruption are common. Children no longer obey their parents, and the end of the world is inevitably approaching. Sounds like a recent prediction, doesn't it? But it was written on an Assyrian clay tablet around 2,800 B.C., more than 5,000 years ago. How about the rapture? Harold Camping predicted the rapture, that the world would end in 1994. When that didn't happen, he said he had miscalculated his numbers and reset the date to May 21st, 2011. Again, wrong. He took one final stab at it and put it at October 21st of 2011. Obviously, that didn't happen as well. But it should be noted that Mr. Camping's personal end of the world occurred in December of 2013. There are other cataclysmic predictions of civilization as we know it. The Jupiter Effect of 1982, the Mayan calendar prediction of 2012, and who can forget Y2K. Obviously, all those ended up to be false warnings. However, that is not to say that during yesterday's eclipse, there may have been a couple roosters crowing at midday, or some Galapagos tortoises mating at the moment of totality, or some giraffes running around in crazy patterns. But at the end of the day, the sun set in the west, and it rose again this morning in the east. Another day started in its normal pattern. According to some experts, the earth is about four billion years old, and we have another billion years before life as we know it ends. Some may think that we, as a council, or for that matter, anyone's decisions or actions may seem insignificant in shaping a direction or mistaken. We must continue to work together to make our community better today, plan for the future, and put into motion the successes of tomorrow, because tomorrow is one day closer to a billion years. So back to R.E.M. The refrain repeats, "It's the end of the world as we know it. It's the end of the world as we know it. It's the end of the world as we know it, and I feel fine." I do feel fine, and I like where Omaha is headed. Thank you.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the meeting act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, welcome to the Omaha City Council. We appreciate having you here today and hearing from you on our many items. I would encourage you to turn your cellphones off, or at least to vibrate.
Item six, to consider a class C liquor license for PAX popcorn and cocktails located at 1118 Howard Street.
The public hearing and vote on item six is today. Proponents, please. Anyone here on item six? Please come down. Can I just name an address for the record?
Angela Marie Four with PAX popcorn and cocktails. Do you want the address to the establishment?
That's fine.
1118 Howard Street, Omaha, Nebraska, Market.
Okay, here to answer questions.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other proponents today?
No, they are in Belgium.
Good place to be.
Yes, it is.
Any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Yes.
Good afternoon, thanks for coming down. So tell us what PAX popcorn and cocktails, what's that going to look like?
So it's going to be kind of a bougie lounge. I've owned the company for about a year and a half, and so up until now, we've been doing like a lot of the events like at CHI Center. And so we have...
Go over this way.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry.
You're good.
So it's going to be a lounge, and we've been designing popcorn for about a year and a half now. We've been doing a lot of the events like at CHI Center, a lot of the bigger shows like at Lancaster Event Center, and so it's gourmet popcorn. It's like bourbon bacon cheese, sweet whiskey pecan, Cabernet caramel. So when you walk in the lounge, it's going to be a craft cocktail menu, where every craft cocktail has like a popcorn paired with it. We're going to do retail out of there and sell the popcorn to go. We're going to do wine slushies, peach mango bolognese is one of my best sellers, and grown men like you like go crazy over it. And then the third item that we're adding, which is unique, is we're going to be doing corn dogs. Not just like a normal corn dog dipped in mustard, it's going to be like corn dogs, like we're going to do our breakfast dog, and it's going to be a sausage corn dog dipped in maple syrup. And we're just, so corn dogs, popcorn, and craft cocktails and wine slushies.
Well, you sound like a great salesperson, very enticing, so...
Thank you.
Welcome to the old market, and thanks for being here today, and I'm glad to make a motion to support this today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Motion to approve in a second. Roll call.
Hug. Johnson. Melton.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thank you, hope to see you all at the grand opening.
Good luck.
Thank you so much. Am I free too?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much.
Item seven, to consider a class C liquor license for Total Wine Spirits Beer &amp; More located at 1220 South 71st Street.
Public hearing and vote on number seven is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Rob Futhy, 500 Energy Plaza, Fraser Stryker Law Firm, on behalf of the applicant. I have with me Mr. Bob Schaefer, who's the general counsel of Total Wine, came in from Maryland to talk to the council. He's going to make a short presentation.
Okay, thank you. Welcome to Omaha.
Thank you, good afternoon. I did, I know you have a full...
Just name an address too for the record.
My name is Robert Schaefer, and my address is 6600 Rockledge Drive, Bethesda, Maryland. I wanted to talk a little bit very briefly about our company and our organization and our decision, why we would like to be opening our 29th state and our 260th store in Omaha, Nebraska. The company that I work for has been around for a little over 30 years now. We're based in Bethesda, Maryland, which is right outside of the Washington, D.C. area. We have, as I noted, over 265 stores in 28 states. The business has been around and is very successful. We have identified as part of our expansion for this year, one new state, Nebraska, and we are hoping to open another 14 to 15 stores, along with the one in Omaha City. Presented a deck with a little bit about our company, but I just want to hone in on a few things. One, we're looking to take over a vacant space, Bed Bath &amp; Beyond on 71st Street. I think that space has been vacant now for going on more than six months. We're hoping to open this store if we can get through the approval process later this year. We're anticipating hiring roughly 50 new employees to work in that store from the local market. The store is fairly large, it has 31,000 square feet. It's in the middle of a densely commercial area, so it's ideally suited to serve its purpose, and we're very sangman about that location and sangman about the city of Omaha for our latest expansion project. We're looking to infuse about $3 million of capital in the building itself. The building is roughly 12 years old now, so it needs a little bit of upgrade, and we're very excited about the opportunity. Our business is somewhat unique. We try to find locations where we can be successful, but we also try to fill voids in marketplaces where a business like ours doesn't currently exist. So we're not just another liquor store, we're a store that has a different model, a different approach, a much broader selection of products, a much more consumer-focused approach to engagement and what we call experiential retailing. So that's the model. We think it will be a good, successful model here in Omaha. We hope to have your support. We look to promote some local products, and there are some local products that are manufactured in Nebraska and in Omaha, and I've identified some of those products. The store itself will be beautiful. We don't have a typical store, as I said, this is 31,000 square feet. We'll completely redo the interior space. There will be an educational classroom inside the store that would concede about 50 people. That's because experiential retailing begins with a more informed and educated consumer, so we want to bring people in the classroom and talk a little bit about how products are made, and they can sample some products in compliance with the laws. So we think that will be a very positive attribute. Our business, and I took a look before I came here, at some of the laws on sales to minors, so I'm very sensitive to that. We have a national business, of course, we have laws like that all over the country. But we have a slightly different approach than most businesses, because we actually incentivize our employees to ask people for their IDs. We don't allow any children in our stores. We do permit moms who are shopping with their children to come into the stores, but we have security cameras in the stores. We have a very robust policy with our employees that we have, everyone wears a button that says "ID anyone who looks under 30," and the employees are very, very committed to that objective. And so about, every year, we spend about a million dollars on extra pay to people who have carded people, because we want to incentivize them to do the right thing and ensure that we're not allowing children or anyone who doesn't belong in our stores to purchase alcohol. So with that, I will open the floor up to any questions that you may have. I'm here to answer any questions you might have, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Bob, good afternoon.
Thank you very much.
Omaha, we're glad to have you here. It's great to hear 50 employees in that vacant space in the middle of the old Exorben racetrack. And you said this is the 29th state you're coming to?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and how many wines and beers are you going to have available at 31,000 feet, you said, right?
We'll have roughly 8,000 different kinds of wine, and we'll have about 35,000 different spirits, about 3,000 different kinds of beer, not only, you know, national brand beers, but a lot of craft beer that might not be available in the marketplace.
Okay, and you talked about maybe getting some local products as well, that's great. And the state of Nebraska, there's a lot of good craft brews.
Yes, sir.
So I'd like to make a motion to support this and welcome you here, and hoping you got some good Irish stouts and lagers, and I know there's one down in Shadow Lake, where my daughter's a pharmacist at the Hy-Vee down there, and I've been in that store once, and it is impressive, the great selection, it's not the same one that you have, but I can envision it is the same. So I know that people in the middle of Omaha and the entire area for that matter are going to, this will be a great draw. So welcome to Omaha, and I am glad to support this today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion in a second to approve. Ms. Johnson.
Yes, Mr. President, it should be noted that the attachment indicates that there's 57 pages of document on this. Unfortunately, there is no information on those pages other than page 32, 52, and 53, and 54. So I don't know what happened here, why it's being perceived that we have 57 pages to look at.
Good, thank you. Note for the lights, there's a motion in a second to approve. Roll call.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Additional question?
Yes.
I didn't get an answer.
We're voting.
I didn't get an answer regarding my question for the blank pages.
It was not clear to me that was a question, I thought that was an observation, so we did call for the vote.
No.
I do have a copy of the...
Yes. Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to one.
Okay. I'll make a note of that. Thank you very much, thank you. And our chief of stores is...
Thanks, we're on to the next item now, but thank you.
Thank you.
Item eight, to consider a class C liquor license for Cattle Call located at 300 South 16th Street, Suite 101.
Public hearing and vote on item eight is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, council members. Dave Houghton, 2804 South 87th Ave. You're on behalf of the applicant, Momo Station LLC Doing Businesses Cattle Call. The establishment will be located at 300 South 16th Street, Suite 101. I would note to the council that my client is negotiating a right-of-way lease with the city concurrently with the application. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Is motion to approve in a second? Roll call.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item nine, to consider a class C liquor license for Speedy Mart, 2872, located at 7202 F Street.
Public hearing and vote on number nine is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, John Dilsefer, 237 16P Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I represent Western Oil Two LLC Speedy Mart. Just wanted to make myself available to the council for any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. There's a motion to approve in a second. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Again, on these, this document says that there's 46 pages, there's blank pages. I need someone to give me an answer to these blank pages.
Let a clerk, answer the clerk can provide. Okay. Madam Clerk, if you wouldn't mind just providing that answer on the record there to the question? Yep.
So the complete application is included. The Liquor Control Commission just scanned some blank pages.
Anything further, Ms. Johnson? Okay, thank you. There's a motion in a second to approve. Roll call.
Hug. Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 10, to consider a class B liquor license for Mall Mart located at 2401 Levinworth Street.
Public hearing and vote on number 10 is today. Proponents, please. We have the applicant by Zoom. Get you off mute here in a minute.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Awesome, okay. My name is Miriam Zahid, and address for state of record is 2401 Levinworth Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68105. We're just applying for a class B off-sale liquor license, because it is a gas station, we hope to kind of provide a variety of different type of beers and everything, so I'll open the floor to questions, but yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
I hate to continue to harp on these blank pages, but on this particular document, when we look at the application, which I appreciate the explanation that all of the pages are here, however, questions one through four of the application is not here. We have blank pages before the page eight, where the answer or question number five is there, six, seven, eight. So I have no idea where the answers are, the question of one through four, which in my mind should complete the entire application. So here we have one, two, three, and four. Here, we do not have that in this. So is one, two, three, and four a secret or something, or? Why? But... No, what I'm asking is, is the application, it says one, two, three, and four. Why do we have question number five, six, and seven, and eight, and nine here that's displayed in this document and the other ones? Right, but why do we not have one through four of this in here? Because it's not there. It may be there, but it's not here. And my question is, so should, I mean, are we being transparent? Or is it not needed, or is it expected to be? I'm just asking.
Would you like to have a representative of the clerk's office come, Ms. Johnson? To address that top question?
If everyone on the city council is okay with not having one through four here, that's fine. It's not necessary for me, so we can move on.
Okay. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you. It seems to me all of these, it looks like the Liquor Commission just had some kind of scanning where they scanned a bunch of additional pages. I do see that the, we have complete applications that were attached, the complete attachments and everything are available to the public in the city clerk's office, and so the application by the applicant was complete and reviewed by our city clerk's office and complies with everything that needs to be complied, so I'm perfectly comfortable. If anybody would like to see a complete copy, they can see the clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I'm kind, I am kind of confused. I, every week when we get the agenda, I go through all of those attachments, and they were there on, when I reviewed them earlier in the week, or over the weekend, so I'm not sure why they didn't scan in onto the iPad, but when I looked on the city laptop, all the information was there. I went through them line by line.
Maybe it didn't transfer over to the Adobe app, but they are actually online. I'm on the city clerk website, and they are all there. Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Harding.
I was actually going to say a similar thing, because actually, Councilmember Rowe and I kind of noticed the issue last week, that there were a number of pages in the liquor applications on our iPads that weren't showing, but I also confirmed when I was going through this on my desktop, that the whole application was there, which I reviewed. So I'm not sure, as you said, maybe on this version on our iPads, maybe it didn't all get through, but it was, it's publicly available and was transparent, and I know, as Councilmember Rowe said, you know, I went through it as well. So I don't know if there was, was there a motion or not?
Not yet.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion to approve in a second. Roll call.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to one. Item 11, to consider a liquor license addition application for Godega Market for an outdoor addition located at 423 South 11th Street. A's communication from the Planning Department regarding a permit for the outdoor area.
Public hearing and vote on number 11 is today. We have the applicant by Zoom. Mr. Flick will get you off mute here in a second. Okay, try that. Name and address.
My name is Nate. The business address is 423 South 11th Street, Omaha, 68102.
Okay, just here to answer questions, right?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
I'll make a motion to approve this. It's subject to permits, correct?
Yes. There's a motion in a second to approve subject to permits. Roll call.
Hug. Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to one.
Thank you.
Item 12, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Blondo Point with a waiver to Section 53-82B cul-de-sac length located northwest of 209th and Blondo Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 12 is today. Proponents, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Brent Beller, 1140 Western Road, on behalf of the applicant, Falcone Land Development. With me today is Jeff Elliott and Kevin Sassy, project engineers. In case you have any engineering questions, I'll do my best. The property in question is a little interesting, just from historical context. So we're out west of 204th, just south of downtown Elkhorn. This is 175 acres. I'm going to outline the property right here. This property, if you know the Gottsch family, they are one of our more prominent farming families that owned a lot of property out here, and therefore, a lot of us in the development community, we're buying a lot of their property now as Omaha expands west. But this was, as far as we know, this was their original family house, and so their original ground. So kind of neat that we are, we have the opportunity to develop this. What's being proposed is this preliminary plat for you today. This will be a single-family residential development, 300 and, I'm sorry, 179, 379 lots, single-family. These will be your kind of middle income from, or middle market value from 500,000 upwards of a million, just depending. The only caveat to that is there are some larger estate lots on the west side of this. They're kind of on, if you could see a topography here, there's a ridgeline out there, so we got to be a little bit sensitive with our sewer, and so those will sewer a little bit differently. But all told, pretty good development. As you know, Falcone Land Development has done a number of developments out here. This is our newest one. We had a neighborhood meeting back in February with residents that lived within the area. It was well-attended, and I thought fruitful in the sense that to the south of us, and I think I'll probably show, if I, I'm going to go back to my original map. This is the Greenbrier Development. Summer Glen is right here. This is actually a City of Omaha park that we're going to improve as part of our development. This is a, McCardle Grading owns that, and then there's actually a rail line that goes to the north of us. But a lot of the concerns that we heard from the constituents that live in, especially the Greenbrier neighborhood, is as we kind of learned, it's a pretty tight-knit community. It's been there a long time. They don't have streetlights, they don't have sidewalks, just because it was developed under, as I understand, Elkhorn's development. But they did share a number of concerns with respect to traffic, and so we obviously want to have and maintain safe and adequate traffic. We did do a traffic study. When that traffic study came back, once we're fully developed, just remember the measuring parameters when those studies are done, A is the best, sometimes F or G is actually the worst. When we do this development, our impacts over the course of our development and the lifecycle of this development were A and B. So the streets in here, as designed, obviously the city of Omaha Public Works looks at all this, will accommodate all of our traffic. That's not to say that we didn't listen to residents and their concerns, especially this is actually Skyline Drive, and so if I'm, if I can pull out a little bit, this is our development, this is Skyline Drive, and it comes right here. If you know where Cumberland Park is, there's a large sports utility, or sports fields and athletics right here, and then West Dodge Road. This road, as we understand, this is Skyline, is well-traveled, meaning people do speed down that. That's existing today, but the reality is, is, you know, most of our traffic will either go on Park Road, which we're improving basically up to this point, and then this is 209th, and this is Skyline. The difference is on Skyline... Uh, the difference is on Skyline, we're actually gonna install stops, or stop signs. So right now, there is no stop sign here. Uh, there's also no stop sign at Park Road. So as part of our discussions with Public Works, uh, we will make this a T-intersection. We will make that a T-intersection, intersection. So traffic will hopefully slow down. Um, unfortunately, there was a, there was an incident with a pedestrian biker, uh, right here, uh, where someone actually passed away, uh, due to taking that curve without the stop sign. So, um, whenever we do these developments, we obviously talk to Public Works. They have vast insight into our design. Um, we wanna make it safe, so we're actually dedicating, uh, a portion of 209th for that to be expanded. Blondo Street, as you get right here, is actually gravel, but this will be fully paved and improved and widened. Um, and then we're, we're talking with the neighbors to our, uh, south about landscaping. There's, there's a bit of a gray change there. Uh, so as we get the final sign-off from city staff as to how they want that designed, uh, we'll do that. Otherwise, we're here for any questions, uh, and we appreciate your consideration of this final plat. Obviously, this comes before you with both planning board and planning department's recommendation for approval. Thank you.
Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents?
Hi, good afternoon. Wesley Seabert, 21408 Ridgewood Road. Um, I stand before you not opposed to the fact that Elkhorn's developed. You know, I've actually bought my house 22 years ago. Uh, Omaha stopped at 156th Street, and Dodge was a two-lane road. So needless to say, a lot's changed in the 22 years that I've lived in Greenbrier. Um, I think some of the issues were addressed, but in regards to the traffic, we've asked numerous times in regards to, um, the traffic study that's been cited. We haven't been, as a resident of Greenbrier, provided any of that information. Skyline is extremely, uh, well-traveled at this point without this development. In fact, you can oftentimes see traffic backing up onto Dodge Street at 190th. And then Skyline Road, um, when you're taking that exit off of Dodge, it's one lane to either turn left or to turn right. So if you have any car that's turning left, that can back up dozens of cars as it is right now. Not to mention the exceeding traffic that exists during UBT, um, volleyball events and everything that occurs in Elkhorn during the, um, during the, the weekends. During weekdays, school travel also congests the areas that they're talking about, both on Skyline Drive and on Park Road. Those exits, exiting that area is simply two lanes. Skyline Road is just a two-lane road. So when you look at the development, um, given the T-intersection, one of the biggest issues, do you mind if I borrow the map really quick? Is it a propose? Yeah. So... My house is that one right there. Um, and the way that it's set up right now, so you can see the way that the subdivision, um, there's only three exits that they have serving these 379 lots. If you look at a similar development that was cited on Summer Glen, Summer Glen's a fraction of the size, and there's five different exits that you can enter into and out of this subdivision. So this is extremely limited. And specifically, if you look at this, uh, intersection that would be created at 214th and Blondo, this is a picture of how this looks today. All right, you can see that, as mentioned, in Greenbrier, and we are a tight-knit community. We don't have sidewalks and we don't have streets. There's gonna be a four-lane, if this is proposed and approved, this will be a four-stop intersection here. And what the concern is, is to exit the new development, you would have to turn left onto Blondo. And that's gonna get congested. So what would prevent people from just blowing through the four-lane intersection and continuing onto our neighborhood? Where we don't have any stop signs that would prevent this kind of traffic. Furthermore, because the development is quite old, we have conditions already that exist with our streets and our infrastructure. So these are the streets, this is right down the road from where I live. And you can see the degradation that's already existing in the streets. I mean, this is where kids ride their bicycles and walk to and from school. So these are the issues that the neighborhood is concerned of. Um, and we just hope that the approval, cause again, we don't wanna stifle the growth, and we're not against the development. We just wanna make sure that it's given the appropriate consideration and that the design of the, um, the design of the plots are best suited, not only for the new development, but those individuals that have lived there. You know, Mr. Harding, thank you so much for your correspondence. I really appreciate that. We sat on the city charter together. I think you know my vision and views of Omaha, a city I love, and Elkhorn. President Patterson, you and I have dealt with some pretty complicated social issues for the betterment of our community. And we did it with poise and, and with, you know, um, with professionalism. And that's just how I would propose that, uh, the city council takes upon this issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other opponents today?
I was looking forward to this. Uh, Donnie R. Johnson, the Johnson Equestrian Foundation, and North, uh, North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. Uh, to make a long story short, sir, I think the city council is being hoodwinked by both of these gentlemen. I was out at Skyline Ranch gonna buy some property out there, and guess what those folks did? All them houses in Skyline Ranch got barns next up to their house, and they can't sell them, so they... We had an argument in 1980. The roads in first or the development? So out there in 1980, some of you folks are probably still in college. We had this right here in city council. Do we put the roads in first or the building? So go out to Skyline Ranch, and you'll see how they trying to hoodwind you and cheat us out of our taxes in Omaha.
Any other opponents, the number 12?
Louis Jimenez, 2709 Dewey Avenue. Council members, uh, if this development doesn't work out for traffic, it, the residents have no recourse. They won't have any recourse. You guys are making the decision. You make the decision. The legislator isn't, the commissioners aren't. It's you guys, and, uh, I share the concerns about traffic, uh, because it's a two, uh, Skyline is a two-lane road. And I, I don't know how this development's gonna impact, but I do know that if there's more development westward, i- it's gonna really be a mess. It's gonna be a jam. And I think the only reason why Skyline is working out is because most of the development, uh, stays within the area. It's, uh, on the east side of Skyline. If you go west of, uh, Skyline, there isn't much development. But we are growing, so either you deal with it here with the developments are happening, or you're gonna deal with it later. And if you're gonna deal with it later, you need to have, uh, a very fluid, uh, traffic way, that you will, uh, provide for the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Well, I just have a question. If you go down south of center to those developments, um, they use, they put in roundabouts, um, which seem to work well, because then you don't have to worry about people. Certainly, the, there are certain places in the city, Brent, if you wanna come up, that I don't support roundabouts. Then there are certain places in maybe an area like this, where maybe a roundabout would make the most sense, and it looks like there's enough space. So wouldn't that be better so that traffic wouldn't back up when you have people stop trying to turn left?
Brent Beller, 1140 Western Road. Um, good question. The reality is, let me back up to address a little bit what Wesley referenced. So when we do developments, any developments of this nature, we go get an independent traffic study. Jeff and his team aren't preparing it. Kevin's not preparing it. We get independent. They do their own traffic analysis based on everything that's been going on or that we're proposing. That analysis goes to us. That analysis also goes to the City of Omaha, where their professional engineers also look at the traffic study and make the determination of whether or not the entrances, exits, widths, stop signs, if you have a stop sign, if you have a roundabout, all those determinations are made by the city. We follow suit. So, uh, any sort of recommendation that staff makes to us, we have to implement as part of this preliminary plat. So I don't disagree. I live in the Dundee area, and we have roundabouts, and they seem to work. And there's certainly some intersections where we could have them. But whether or not we have one here, I'd have to defer to Mr. Haas or Mr. Stube as to whether or not that's something the city wants us to do. We would not, I don't think, oppose it by any means.
And, and I'm just thinking, so I'm, I'm specifically referring to Privata, Blue Sage Creek, which I think might be a Falcone, it's either Falcone or Lannahaw development. I can't remember. Sorry. But, I mean, there's a lot less traffic there. It's brand-new development. I mean, a lot less traffic than what I think we would anticipate here. And they have the roundabouts there, so I guess that would be my question. I'm not sure to Mr. Stube or Mr. Fanslaw. Who, who would like to answer?
Bob Stube, Public Works. So obviously, this is preliminary plat. Um, as, as Brett indicated, there's a number of conditions included within the preliminary plat. So they'll have to go through that evaluation. Uh, in fact, it talks about item six, provide all improvements identified in the final approved traffic memo. Item, uh, eight identifies park road improvements, um, should meet standards. So those are the types of things that they'll have to submit to us, which would be then incorporated into a future subdivision agreement. So, so there are conditions that have been identified as part, uh, part of this particular plat.
So that could be something that could be maybe identified, discussed, and since this is just a preliminary plat, maybe that's something that you could discuss even with the, maybe the residents in Greenbrier? Cause it sounds like no one's really against the development. We want the city to grow. It's just a, a traffic measure. So this, maybe this would be the thing that would potentially make it better. So I'm just making, I'm just kind of throwing it out there, because I'm thinking of some of the other new developments that are utilizing them, and they seem to work well.
It's, it's pretty uniform. I've done enough of these. We, we don't fight connectivity when we, you know, attach a street to an existing street, and we don't fight public safety, life safety issues when we do developments. Nothing is different on this plat than any other development. So if Public Works comes in and says they want a roundabout here, or a roundabout more closer to the, the, like, Greenbrier exit, I don't know that we would fight it. Um, we're in favor of public safety. Last thing we want is to cause an accident.
Right. No, I'm just, it was just kind of my...
Yep.
My thought. I'm supportive of the development. I, I think it's great. I just, it, that just seemed to me to be a common sense solution that would maybe make everybody happy.
Much smarter people than I have that determination for.
Not me, and again, you know, I don't think necessarily roundabouts work everywhere, but it might make sense in this situation.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson.
Yes, thank you. Um, the gentleman here...
If you would come up, please.
Wesley Seabert, 21408 Ridg, Ri, sorry, Ridgewood Road.
Thank you, Wesley.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Wesley, are you satisfied with the answer that we just, um, discussed? Where the analysis of the, um, proposed changes, uh, is forthcoming? Are you satisfied with that, and knowing that that is going to come down the line?
I think the willingness, sorry, go ahead. I didn't mean to step on you there.
Um, for example, if we vote yes today to pass this, are you satisfied with the fact that this is forthcoming?
Satisfied in the sense that it seems like there's a willingness to move forward in, in regards to hear the community out and see if there's alternatives. I love council, uh, member Melton's idea of putting in some roundabouts, or that may divert some of the traffic issues. I think the biggest concern that we have as a neighborhood is just the influx of traffic that could come in. So a roundabout idea, I mean, if Falcone and the development team is willing to continue conversations with the neighborhood, it just, we recognize the fact that this is like a domino. Once this gets kicked over, it's not gonna stop, right? So we just wanna make sure that we have the agreeance that our voices would be heard. And again, no one's standing in objection to the development itself. We just wanna make sure that our neighborhood, which is a really special neighborhood in Elkhorn, I mean, it's a really cool neighborhood in Omaha, is, you know, is maintained and not impacted in a negative sense.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, yeah, I, I had a chance to talk to, uh, both Mr. Beller and, and, uh, Mr. Seabert about this, uh, too. And, and I was, I too was gonna note that I, I know, this is actually, you know, a lot of times when we have these preliminary plats, it's, it's not unusual to have a number of conditions that have to be met before they're, uh, before they're agreed to, or at least, um, complied with, before it moves to us for a final plat. This one, I'll, I'll, has 34, which seems to be more than normal, but not something that's insurmountable and that can't be worked through. But was gonna note too, that items six, seven, and eight dealing kind of with, with the traffic and, and what can be done, it have to be satisfied before that goes, uh, before us as a final plat. So I like the conversation that we've, we've had here today as well, too. And I was gonna mention, I, I think the, I believe the, the, um, traffic study, I think, um, Wesley said that he hadn't seen that, but I think that's a matter of public record. So I'm sure that that could be made available. And, and as this continues to work through, um, the, the, for, for planning and Public Works, before we get to a final plat, some of those things and some of those discussions, I think, can take place. So I appreciate the conversation we're having about this. Thank you.
Thank you. I agree. There's no further lights. Is there a motion?
Second.
Is motion approved in a second? Row call.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 13, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Sinclair Edition with a waiver to section 53 99 sidewalks, located south of 230th Street and Edgewater Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 13 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Second.
There's a motion in a second to approve. Row call.
Hug. Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 14, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Stratford Park, replat two, located southwest of Rachel Snowden Parkway and 173rd Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 14 is today. Proponents, please.
Uh, Joe Flaxbeard, 14710 West Dodge Road, on behalf of the applicant, just here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. There's a motion to approve in a second. Row call.
Hug. Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Items 15 and 16 can be considered together for Schuler Edition, located south of 230th Street and Edgewater Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 15, an ordinance to rezone this property from AG District to DR District. Item 16, a resolution to approve the final plat.
Public hearing and vote on items 15 and 16 are today. Proponents, please.
Andrew Rec, 14503 Grover Street, uh, here on behalf of the applicant, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents?
Uh, Donnie R. Johnson, the Johnson Equestrian Foundation, and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. And, uh, Mr. Bagley, as we was looking at these 230th Street, I go out that area all the time. I live out there sometimes, and sometimes I don't. In the meantime, Skyline Ranch, when you get a chance, go out there. All those houses out there on, got barns on the house.
So around 230th and Edgewater now, right?
Yeah, but I'm trying to get you to move in the same direction we are, far as, if you keep turning all this land out there in development, when are we gonna make some room for us baby boomers to go into, uh, agriculture or something as a retirement? You guys are just developing everything, and Skyline Ranch is the biggest mess you ever seen. Every house out there was waiting on an excitement to stay here. It's gone. And now they got these barns on their house. I told the folks I don't want the subdivision.
Any other opponents on these items? Seeing none, public hearings are closed.
Second.
There's a motion to approve in a second. Row call.
Hug. Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 17 through 19 can be considered together for Sinan Tan's, located northwest of Skyline Drive and Old Center Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 17, an ordinance to rezone this property from AG District to R4 District. Item 18, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 19, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and vote on items 17, 18, and 19 are today. Proponents, please.
Andrew Rec, 14503 Grover Street, uh, here on behalf of the applicant, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. There's a motion in a second to approve. Row call.
Hug. Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Items 20 through 22 can be considered together for Fort Omaha Expansion, replat one, located northwest of 30th Street and Sorensen Parkway. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 20, an ordinance to rezone this property from R4 District and GI District to R4 District. Item 21, an ordinance to mend the boundaries of the ACI 2 overlay district to incorporate this property into that district. Item 22, a resolution to approve the final plat.
Public hearing and vote on items 20, 21, and 22 are today. Proponents, please.
Uh, Joe Flaxbeard, 14710 West Dodge Road, on behalf of the college. Very briefly...
On behalf of the college, very briefly, maybe I don't know how that works. Oh, there it goes. Fort Omaha Campus Metro Community College, pretty large tract of land. I'm just going to draw your attention here to the southeast corner. There was an old car wash symphony of suds that used to be there when the Fort Omaha campus expanded, you know, a handful of years ago. They were in negotiations, my understanding is, to try to purchase that car wash property. It didn't happen until years later. So, this plat and rezoning simply to bring that small sliver of property officially into the fold of the campus property. Here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Johnson. Is motion approved in a second? Roll call.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Begley.
Aye.
Harding.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 23, An Ordnance to Rezone Property Located at 2201 North 16th Street from GC District to R7 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 23 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Please come down.
Anton Roth, 1512 Burdette. It's listed as medium density residential. What is medium density residential?
We can ask that question here in a minute if you'd like.
Okay.
Okay.
Let me just go sit down and...
All right. Yeah, you can wait if you'd like. Any other opponents today? Seeing none, public hearings are closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you. Mr. President, I'm going to follow up on the gentleman that just came up. I'm sorry, sir, if you would like to come back up and give him an opportunity to... You, earlier today, you had asked not only what is the medium density, what that is, but you also asked what the size of the proposed development would be. Is that correct?
Yeah.
All right. So, if we could answer those two questions for the constituent, please.
Mr. Fanslow?
Sure. Yep, I'll take those. So, we own, the city of Omaha owns this property now. There's been interest in developing a portion of that area, including this lot. So, before we dispose of it, it was our thought, and it's pretty customary for us to properly rezone the property to match the surrounding properties. And in this case, this lot is owned GC now, kind of out of place. So, we are proposing to have it rezoned to R7, which matches the residential zoning in the area. R7, to answer your question, what does medium density mean? It's a residential district. It's one of our higher classified residential districts. There's a number of uses that are allowed on it. Mostly, single-family duplex townhomes. There are some apartments that, apartments can be located on R7 property, but this lot by itself couldn't support multifamily. So, really, what we're doing was we're making the zoning right. We're making it master plan compliant before we go through the disposal process.
I didn't bring the paperwork. The original letter I got, it showed that lot on the corner, and there's actually two more lots to the north of there.
So, yeah, we're disposing of the city-owned property in that with this...
You wouldn't happen to know the size of that lot off?
Not off the top of my head, but I can give you my card. We can talk after.
Okay.
Shoot me an email or call me.
If that was to come up for sale, would you sell all three lots then?
I can't. If we own them, we'll probably package them together, yes.
Okay.
So, but we can connect.
If you were to put them three lots together, that would be a pretty big, pretty good... You could put a pretty big building there.
Yeah. I mean, they are typical-sized residential lots.
Yeah.
So...
But roughly, they're usually about 50 wide and about 130 deep.
Yeah, they're anywhere between 5,000 and 6,000 square feet typically.
Yeah, okay. So, after the meeting, get your card?
I can give it to you as soon as we're done here.
All right.
All right.
Mr. Fanslow, I would like to be included in that discussion. Can you also elaborate? There has been interest in this area. Can you elaborate on that, please?
Like I said, we generally, there's been interest. We are going through a process of disposing of city-owned property all over the city. There's, yes, there's a lot of city-owned property in North and South Omaha. And again, before we dispose of any city-owned property, we like to right-size it for zoning and to get it master plan compliant. It saves us a lot of headaches down the road sometimes if we dispose of property and it's not necessarily zoned appropriately for the neighborhood. So, we try to like to do that upfront.
This is in my district, and I'd like to have more clarity on what and who made some interest in this area. Can you elaborate on that, please?
Not, I just don't know at this time. We just know that we're going to dispose of this piece of property. There has been interest in the area.
I'm asking about the interest in the area.
There's always interest. Well, there's just interest in this area generally for redevelopment. I don't have anything specific in front of me for this case.
So, you don't have any examples of the interests? Or like, for example...
I don't have any current zoning or platting applications to share with you at this time.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Yes.
Thank you. Are you satisfied with the answers that you've received?
Is it still up in the air, then?
You got the answers that Planning Department provided us with. We don't know what will happen here. There's been some interest, but we have, if we vote on this today, we have no idea what the future looks like over here other than that it would be an opportunity for housing, large-sized housing.
Okay. Thank you.
And so, you're satisfied with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. A motion to approve?
Is motion a second to approve? Roll call.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Begley.
Aye.
Harding.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 24, An Ordnance to Rezone Property Located at 727 South 13th Street from DS District to CBD District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 24 is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, my name's Megan Wolf. I'm with Olson, the civil engineer on the project. The address is 2111 South 67th Street, Suite 200.
Thank you.
Rob Johnson with Project Advocates, 1313 Cumming Street, Suite 200. Here on behalf of the applicant to make a brief presentation and answer any questions. The property we're asking to be rezoned is currently a parking lot around the Bemis Building here on the lower right-hand corner, being redeveloped into a community garden by a private funder. It will be operated by Loritz and Gardens. They have been through Planning Board and just seeking to make the zoning compliant with their recommendation and with what is being currently done in the area.
Great. Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Begley.
Thanks, Mr. President. Rock, you jump back up again. Good afternoon. Thanks for coming back. Can you put that picture back up?
Yeah, absolutely.
I appreciate you bringing that because that, if you're, I don't want to say if you're speeding down Lebonworth Street, but you come to the bottom of the hill there and you see that garden, this is what it's going to look like. This is what you project that location to look like going forward, right?
Correct.
That'll be a real nice, can you shuffle those pictures around a little bit?
Yeah. I'll show you some.
Great. So, it's beautification of that location. It's been a vacant lot and a garden on it. So, if anybody is watching this online, that's going to be a great, beautiful location. Tell me some of the things you're looking to do there.
So, working with the landscape architect, there are three or four distinct areas of the garden that they are currently proposing. One is a large lawn area for informal recreation, gathering, picnicking. There is a community dining area. There is currently no café planned, but if you want to bring coffee, if you would like to bring lunch down, gather with your friends, with your family. This area here will be a rain garden designed to collect the stormwater as part of our stormwater management plan, but also facilitate native plantings to Nebraska that are conducive with wet areas. And then, down on the bottom section here, more of a play garden or a playground garden focused with children in mind.
Will there be restrooms there?
Yes, there will be restrooms right here alongside the outside of the Bemis Building.
Appreciate you coming down, and we had a nice chat about this. Again, thanks for bringing those pictures because when we talk about these things, sometimes seeing that, yeah, that's great. I mean, that's, again, I'm not advocating people speed down Lebonworth Street because we're working on that with the Omaha Police to get a little radar there if you're listening. But that really is going to be great if you're coming from the south into the O-Market. That's going to kind of really catch your eye on how beautiful this is going to be headed into the O-Market and all the great things we got going downtown. So, appreciate you coming down. I'll be glad to make a motion to support this today.
Second. Motion a second. Mr. Hood.
So, could you put the map up there for drawing, please?
Yes.
I'd like the picture better. This goes up to Jones Street, right?
Correct. Jones here on the north side, 12th Street on the east, 13th on the west, and Lebonworth on the south.
Okay. I don't know who's going to be able to answer this, but would food trucks be permitted to park in the street either on 13th Street or Jones Street or even Lebonworth Street? Even 12th Street, I guess?
We have been working with the city recently on the best location for food trucks. We had originally suggested 12th Street, but it seems like that won't work out currently with the parallel or with the diagonal spots. But with the parallel spots on 13th Street, that is our revised plan.
Okay. Now, I know recently, in the past couple of years, Jones and 12th Street were renovated. I believe before the renovation, they were parallel to curb parking, if I remember right. So, is it diagonal parking all up and down 12th Street now?
Yes, currently, it is diagonal parking on 12th Street.
Both sides of the street or just on the west side?
I'm unsure of that answer.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
I think it's a great amenity as well, especially for the immediate residents downtown. Larceny provided for by private funding, you said? I think an anonymous donor?
That's correct. The Schlott family has provided most of the funding for this project.
And then, how about maintenance going forward? How will that be handled?
The park will be owned and maintained by Loritz and Gardens.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. There's no further lights. There's a motion, a second to approve? Roll call.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Begley.
Aye.
Harding.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 25, An Ordnance to Amend the Boundaries of the MCC Overlay District to Incorporate Into That District The Property Located at 12805 Fort Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Bees, Communication and Opposition.
Public hearing and vote on number 25 is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, Rob Woodling, Foundations Development. We're planning on developing a affordable housing senior complex at this site. And what we're here today is for an MCC overlay, which provides for a higher level of design standards based upon its proximity to Fort Street. We had a neighborhood meeting in late December to kind of introduce this project to the neighborhood, and we also had a unanimous approval from the Planning Board for this approval. So, be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Milton, you're recognized.
Thank you. I can't think of a better use of that area than to have affordable senior housing right there. I really appreciate your investment, not only in the area, but also your investment in senior citizens in our community. I think it's great. And when we talk about traffic, I would say anything you build, an independent senior living center will have the least amount of traffic as anything else that you could possibly build. So, I appreciate that. And I know, I think there was maybe only one opponent that it had to deal with traffic, which Fort Street, I know, is one of the number one priorities. We've got that on the CIP right now. I know Austin Rouser, I think, was talking about it just a couple of weeks ago. So, we know that Fort Street, really, at least out in West Omaha, is probably one of the most important projects and remains a priority for us to get widened to. So, but thank you.
We have, most of our, many of our residents won't drive, and if they do, they go to church, the grocery store, and the doctor. That's it.
Right. And probably aren't doing it at rush hour.
Not at rush hour and not at speeds.
Right. No, I appreciate it. No, I appreciate it. I think it's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't think there's any more lights. I'll motion to approve.
Motion a second to approve. Roll call.
Hug, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding. Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the City Council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the City Council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the City Council rules of order.
The public hearings on agenda items 26 through 34 were held on April 2nd. There's no further lights. Is there a motion?
Moving approval.
Motion a second. Roll call.
Hug, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding. Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items 35 through 40 are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent, items 35 through 40.
Good afternoon, Council. Anna Bisbouazny with the Planning Department. I'm here with regards to item number 37 to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Thank you. Any other testifiers on these items? Seeing none, public hearings are closed.
Second.
There's a motion a second to approve. Roll call.
Hug, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding. Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 41, an ordinance to amend Chapter 20, Article 1 of the Omaha Municipal Code entitled "In General," to provide for a requirement that motor vehicles and motorcycles park or be stored on hard-surface driveway or paved path adjacent to the driveway outside of a residence. A is amendment of the whole dated April 1st. B is a revised amendment of the whole dated April 4th. C is a revised amendment of the whole dated April 8th. D is communications in support. E is communications in opposition.
Thank you. The vote on item number 41 is today. I think Mr. Hug is the introducer. You were going to discuss amendment of the whole C. You're recognized.
Correct. And you may have to just help me out here. Do I make the motion to amend the fine amount first? And is this, do I make that now?
Yes, and you can take a moment to talk about Amendment C if you'd like, what's different from last week.
Okay. Thank you for helping me along with this. Amendment C, we have made some exemptions. Number one is motor vehicles that display a valid handicap sticker. And we've made an exemption for holidays has approved by the City of, or is holidays recognized by the City of Omaha. And they'd be exempt from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Any temporary parking for purposes of loading or unloading. And any current resident that has a gravel driveway. So those would be the amendments in C. And we'll also be adding the limitation of the fine to a $50 fine.
Okay. Thank you. And for Councilmember's clarification, the change to a $50 fine is a floor amendment that would need to be moved and seconded for consideration?
Okay, I'm going to make that amendment now. So I make a motion to amend the fine to $50.
Okay. I'll second that. Any further lights at this point? Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. This question is for the Law Department.
Maccusie Law Department.
Were there any other discussion or recommendations to resolve this issue other than what is being proposed to us today?
No.
So collaborating with community organizations to organize outreach campaigns promoting reasonable parking behavior was never thought of or talked about as a resolution?
No, no Councilmember brought that to my attention.
Offering incentives for residents who comply with parking regulations such as discounts on parking permits or other city services was not recommended?
Those topics weren't germane to this ordinance, and no Councilmember brought that to my attention.
Okay. I do have someone, a resident within my district that would like to, wasn't, was not in town last week to be available during public hearing and would like to add some information to this discussion. Mr. Higgins, if you could come up, please.
Joe Higgins, 1110 East Camden Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm the president of Levi Carter Sherman Neighborhood Association, and we have a lot of issues in our neighborhood with trash and vehicles. And before you, you should have a letter that I sent, and the two main issues were that the president, the present ordinance is only on residential property, and there is not any stipulation for commercial or industrial. And we had a question to why that was exempted. There is an issue in that regard. In our neighborhood, there were over 500 cars parked on industrial, on rock, for about three or four years. They were recently removed. They were never written. And the other ordinances, the weed and litter controls. So why would we exempt someone that can, that is large and well-funded but find a local resident? There's other examples in our neighborhood. I could go on and on. This bothers me a little bit. I know that in our neighborhood, I go to the precinct meetings occasionally when I can make them, and we've requested patrolling for no parking on the grass in the park. And they said that I was required to call the mayor's hotline or the non-emergency number. I don't want to be part of the problem. I want to be part of the solution. I want to find a community-based, reasonable way to give people the opportunity to comply. And I know I'm asking for a lot, but I want to be part of the solution. And I asked that we do something simple, and the police department said it wasn't available, but I think we need to look for those avenues. I love Omaha, Nebraska. It's a great town. I've had many offers to move other places. Most of my family's all over the country. Some of them are pretty nice places, and I can move without paying rent. But I choose to stay here, and I like our neighborhood. So I want us to consider what's fair to the residents and not a burden to the police. I've asked the police department just to patrol Levi Carter Park. I don't know how many have had the opportunity to be there, but in the summertime, when it's hot out, you can't get through Lake Shore Drive. It's bumper-to-bumper, loud music, public intoxication, more cars parked on the grass than on the pavement, and it's posted. It's posted. So I think we need to clean up our public areas before we start attacking our citizens and placing fines. Between the park, the boat ramp parking lot close to the entrance, Abbott Drive, recently there were steel I-beams installed to prevent people from turning around. They come in off Abbott Drive, and they're lost, and they whip around, and they cut up the park. We put steel I-beams in, yet it's all posted. The stop sign's been knocked down three times at the corner of my house by semi-trucks driving through that aren't supposed to be there. I called in and reported it to the police, and they never, never called me back about a report. So I realize it's not the best neighborhood in town, but we owe all citizens equal opportunity in compliance, and I don't think we should exempt the wealthy because they're wealthy. And I don't think the police have time since they profess to be short 108 officers present for staffing. So I would look for a better resolution than a fine and involvement with the police department.
Thank you.
If there's any questions, be more than happy to answer.
Thank you. So I'm not going to belittle any more time. I kind of spoke my concern regarding a undue unfairness as it relates to financial hardship for East residents in East Omaha. And I would just like to close with, if our goal is to encourage residents to park not on the grass, I've provided two opportunities to use as that remedy instead of a fine. Again, residents in North Omaha or South Omaha are not financially able to pay $50 or any amount to curb a behavior in which there are other alternatives that we could possibly use first before going after money. Ultimately, the money will result into, if not paid, result into a misdemeanor fine. And currently, our prison system is already maxed out. So this is just another burden, not only to the police department, but also to the correctional centers as well. So I, unfortunately, as it reads today, I'm not able to change my position from last week. And so I will have to vote no for this.
Thank you. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you. Actually, my questions, at least right now, are going to focus just upon the floor amendment, on the change from $500 to $50. So, Mr. Koozie, is the, is the fine of $50, is that a flat fee or there are court costs? Is this something that can be mailed in, or is there still a requirement to appear?
As it stands right now with the amendment, it would be a $50 fine upon conviction. I believe that there are court costs as well. So I know there's court costs, and I think the amount of court costs is $49. At this time, it can't be what's called a waiverable fine, which is via speeding ticket or other kind of rules of the road violations. You can go online, enter a plea of guilty and pay your fine. That is not an option at this time. Those are set up and established by the Nebraska Supreme Court. So the prosecutor's office would have to ask the court to consider it. But whether something is a waiverable fine and what that waiverable fine amount is, is established by the Supreme Court, not by the council in enacting an ordinance, nor would it be done by the prosecutor's office.
So they would have to appear?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So, and then, I know we talked at length, I think, last week about whether or not this was considered a criminal offense. Can you expand on that?
This would be considered a criminal offense. It is something that, I think the best definition is it's an infraction because it's punishable by a fine only. It's an infraction offense, which is still a criminal offense. I would consider it the lowest level of criminal offense beneath a misdemeanor and certainly beneath a felony. It doesn't carry any type of incarceration to it. But despite it being an infraction, despite it being an offense that can only be punishable by a fine, anybody who would receive such a citation would be able to avail themselves of all of their constitutional rights, including a right to trial.
Now, Mr. Fanslow, I have a question for you, and maybe it's going to bounce back to Mr. Koozie. But when we have improperly stored vehicles currently, and our code enforcement is out there, is, how are those, I think they have, but what, a 10-day period to cure? And if they do not, then how, how is that, is that a fine similar to what's being proposed here, or how is that handled?
Dave Fanslow, City Planning. So yeah, when we get a complaint, because it's complaint-driven, we will go out and try to make contact with the property owner. And if we can't make contact with the property owner, we will leave a notice at the residence and within 10 days, to give them 10 days to move the car. And if not, we will make provisions to remove, have the car removed from the property.
Okay. All right. So again, I've been going to reserve my other comments for the amendment of the whole, assuming after this probably gets amended. But I think, as was pointed out, I mean, just because it's a $50 fine, even though that was knocked down from 500 as previously proposed, you know, basically, it's, at the end of the day, it's almost $100 still. And the person is going to have to take time out to go and appear in order to plead guilty for that. So as I said, I'll reserve my other comments for the as amended portion, but wanted to make sure we had that discussion as it relates to the floor amendment we're being considered.
Thank you. Ms. Melton?
No, thank you. Now, I'm, for purposes of, there's a current motion right now for, to amend it to $50. I'll support that motion. However, in the end, I'm not going to support the ordinance. But I definitely think reducing it to $50 makes more sense than having it up to 500. So I appreciate that. But everybody should keep in mind, like Mr. Koozie said, court costs are, at least right now, at approximately 49. I thought they were $42, so I think they've actually even gone up to $49. Those can always rise. So I also have a problem with not having it be a waiverable offense because it forces somebody to come to court, even if they say, I'm in the wrong, I'm sorry, I parked in my yard, I shouldn't have, I'll pay the fine. They literally would have to take off work and physically come to the courthouse in order to do so. So I guess, before I would ever be in support of an ordinance like this, then I think that, Councilmember Hug, I would work with the prosecutor's office to get the Supreme Court to authorize something like this to be a waiverable fine, so that you can send in a guilty waiver along with payment or log online to do so. It's much like your parking tickets or other things that you can do, even speeding tickets. You can do what's called a guilty waiver, written waiver, so that you don't have to actually appear in court because that in and of itself could cost you more than the fine and the court costs, having to take an afternoon off work, in addition to even potentially not having the means to get to court. But this is what I want to say. And Councilmember Hug, I think you have very, very good intentions, but I think that they come with some unintentional results. I think that's what we're seeing here, and at least that's what I was getting from emails from people. By the way, that weren't, most of the emails I received in opposition were not from my district. I think a lot of neighborhoods out in West Omaha who have HOAs or neighborhood associations are enforcing these things themselves. If I parked in my front yard right now, other than to maybe unload something or move, fairly certain that our HOA person would be coming knocking on my door and telling me that I need to move. So I do think that the good intentions also may have disparate results as well, depending on where you are in the city. I think we all believe that no one should be parking their car in their front yard. But I also don't believe that every issue we have in the city can be solved by an ordinance. I don't, I don't go to ordinance and how do we make something that we have a problem with criminal. And that's just more of a principle for me, that I, so in addition, I think that there's other things that if you can make it a waiverable offense, I also think you should exclude it for parking in someone's backyard. I think we heard from Ms. Johnson last week that her and her neighbor, who they're the only two affected, they both allow each other to park in their backyards, and it's not affecting anybody else. And so I think you would have some of those. I also think having a gravel driveway, or if you have a paved driveway, you can't have a gravel parking. I think that maybe that should be changed as well. So I guess I have a lot of issues in it. And while I appreciate the effort to try and exempt holidays, I think that the general public is going to look at these holidays and really say, how come Columbus Day is more important than Father's Day? Or, you know, I think we're going to have a problem with this. I think your idea was, I just use city holidays. But again, this almost looks, I don't think that the public is going to understand why President's Day is exempt and not Easter. So those are some, just some of the issues that I have with the ordinance. Again, I think that there's good intentions here, but this also says you don't get a ticket if your vehicle does not have valid plates. It says, in order for the vehicle to be ticketed under this ordinance, it has to be operable and running. And the definition is current valid license plates will deem it operable under this section. I can tell you, one of the complaints that I see most frequently on my Nextdoor app, that yes, I know, I do read it, I can't help it, that I see is people complaining about all the cars they see with invalid license plates. So now you're telling me if I'm a citizen that keeps my car plated, and excuse me, I'm just, I'm trying to talk in that, if you guys could go back there and talk, that would be great. That's all right. By saying that me, I have valid plates, so I get a ticket if I park in my yard, but if my neighbor hasn't gotten valid plates and their plates are expired for over a year, they get to park in their yard and can't be ticketed. So again, that's, those are some of the just kind of nonsensical things that, or maybe unintentional results that have occurred in how this is drafted. So I guess my opinion would be to maybe place it on file and maybe do some more research or work on it or bring it back. Again, I would say one of my biggest complaints amongst the other ones is it has to be a waiverable, you have to be able to do a written waiverable guilty plea and not have to drive to court for having parked on your yard or somebody else's yard for however long, and you get a ticket. So again, that, those are the reasons I will say yes to the $50 amendment. That's all we're voting on now, but I'm going to say no to the amendment of the whole and to the ordinance at this time.
Good. Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
I've, uh...
Okay. Mr. Hug?
Again, in conversations on the holidays, there was a lot of holidays that were tossed out there, St. Patty's Day being one of them. And for lack of anything better, we just defaulted to the holidays the City of Omaha And as far as a waiverable offense, I have never had a lot of experience with the Nebraska Supreme Court. But I would venture to say that if this prosecutor sent this over with the request, that this be made a waiverable offense once it's passed, I would predict that the Supreme Court probably approve that. But I don't think they would look at it until it's sent over to them and said, asked for an exemption on it. I just don't believe the Supreme Court is in the business of answering what-if scenarios. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bagley?
Thanks, Mr. President. And I, in communication I got on this and a lot of discussions, one of the biggest things that was amended here is the specific, the $50 fine. So I am going to support that because I think that's a fair amount as opposed to the $500 that was originally proposed. And in respect to the conversation that Councilmember Melton brought up on the waiverable offense, Mr. Koozie, how would that process work with the Nebraska Supreme Court since most of us are not attorneys?
Maccusie Law Department, the Supreme Court won't, for lack of a better term, pre-approve something. I wouldn't be able to say, hey, we're thinking about this ordinance. If it passes, would you make it waiverable? The court won't work that way. So the ordinance, it's kind of a chicken and egg situation. The ordinance would have to be passed before the court would then be able to consider making it a waiverable offense.
And how does that work? So let's say this passes today. Does you, as accounting or the city prosecutor, do you petition the Supreme Court? Or do we have to have people written up for these offenses? And then they would determine that? Or how does that work?
The prosecutor's office, Mr. Slump would probably compose a letter with attaching the ordinance and asking that the court consider making this a waiverable offense. That's really about all that would be required, and the court would make a determination as to whether they would or they wouldn't. Are they likely to do it? Yes. Can I guarantee that for you? No, I'm not on the Supreme Court.
Okay. No, fair answer. And Councilmember Melton's points were valid on, if this passes, there's no guarantee that the Supreme Court would do that. But I'm assuming, not being a prosecutor, but the argument would be that it'll be more of an efficient process, not only for the court, but also... but also a person that has cited, if this ordinance is passed, that it would streamline, for the lack of a better description, streamline the process and make it easier, like as was mentioned, a speeding ticket. It would be that same, same way to pay the fine.
Yes, the same concerns raised by Councilmember Milton about people coming to court, and I think the Supreme Court looks at it from a different viewpoint in the sense of, they would rather the courts be more efficiently using their resources than handling situations such as this. So, that would probably how the Supreme Court would look at it in terms of whether to make something a waiverable offense or not. Because I'm looking at the current list right now, and, you know, the list is pretty comprehensive of both state statute offenses and our own municipal code offenses are on there, too. It's about 12 pages of offenses and the waiver, and the waiverable offenses and the penalty that the court assigns to them.
Okay. And the last curveball I'll throw at you here. So, I get a ticket for speeding. I can take the class, which I've done, or I can mail in the fine and pay it. Do you know, assuming whenever that was a law that was passed on speeding, were they always able to mail the payment in for the fine? Or was this something, as you're described here today very clearly, that the Supreme Court would have to determine if it is something you could have a waiverable offense and mail it in?
I don't want to say always. I think the waiverable fine type concept probably, I'm kind of guessing here, came to fruition in probably the mid to late 90s. It started becoming, it was, you know, developing into a concept of allowing people to mail, you know, you can plead guilty on the back of your ticket, mail it in with your fine amount. Plus, you do also have to pay the court cost on any waiverable fines as well as an added tidbit. The court always finds a way to get that. And now, it's developed to the point where you can go online, and you can pay online now with credit cards and other forms of payment to enter your plea as well.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate your help. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. Yes, can I have? Yes, can I have Mr. Larry come up to ask a question?
It seemed to me like you turned this into a public hearing when you invited that gentleman, so I'm going to take just a couple of minutes. I was a voice out, and I took their oath and everything, but there's all kinds of ways to cheat on this. I mean, why don't we do something that's worthwhile here? I can remove the plates off of my car and park it on my thing. Who's going to enforce it? You have enough police, enough neighborhood association people policing the neighborhoods to be able to report everybody that does that? You rely on me to do it, to call in on everybody that I see with, have removed their plates from their car and driving around and maybe park it in my yard or neighbor's yard? And according to these amendments, that's the other thing. The way you guys seem to work this is when you pass an amendment, the next week I can't speak on it unless you open it up like this. So, that's kind of unfair. It's also unfair when my birthday's not exempted here, my wife's birthday. Birthday parties for neighbors aren't. Other similar type events that are just one day, pre-impromptu, Super Bowl parties, Iowa basketball game, Nebraska basketball game aren't exempted. People have parties. You're going to ask the police to spend their time enforcing this? And you're going to tie up the Supreme Court with issues like this? Come on, folks, they can't finish the legislative session down there dealing with things like this. The Supreme Court can't get to a lot of courses, things that they should be doing because they're doing things like this. And then, they just say, "Oh, he doesn't have standing because he didn't remove his license plates." This is ridiculous. You should just scrap it. I drove around Dundee and Walden Hill area just yesterday, between Cummins Street and Hamilton Street, and then a little ways north. I couldn't believe the number of cars. I don't know if they're inoperable or not, parked in the backyard, the side yard. Am I supposed to go on somebody's property to find out if it's operable or not, and then report them myself? Call in to an emergency number and say, "Hey, there's a bunch of cars without license plates out there. They're all in the backyard. They don't look like they're operable." Would you go check them out? Or maybe Pete would get the neighborhood association to do that. Little guy's walking around with a special colored vest. At least we'd know, and we could maybe run out there and move it, or call the neighbor and tell them to move it, or cancel your birthday party, one of the two. You just ought to scrap it.
Thank you. This question is for the Law Department. What happens if I don't appear in court?
Just as with anyone else who receives any sort of citation or is given a court date for any offense, if you do not appear for your arraignment, a warrant is issued for your arrest, bench warrant.
So, if a bench warrant is issued, what happens after that? If I'm arrested, or what happens?
If you're arrested on the bench warrant?
Yes.
Then you're brought to court on your citation, and you're probably new charged of failing to appear.
So, how much, you know, help me out with about how much money does this rack up to be?
In terms of cost to the defendant?
Yes.
Assuming they're convicted, it would be $50 for the fine under this amendment, $49 in court costs, so about $100.
$100, now I've got a bench warrant?
Well, no.
I mean, if I don't pay, pardon me?
That you said what would happen after you got arrested. You would come to court, you would, if you entered a plea or found guilty on the citation, you get the $50 fine plus the $49 in court costs for your conviction.
So, if I'm arrested, I, I'm not going to spend one day in jail?
You could, yes, but you asked about the fine.
Okay. So, to include the possibility of me being arrested and going to jail, how much could this potentially cost me as a person?
I can't estimate an individual's value for time incarceration. I'm not able to give an estimate about what that would be worth to a particular person. I don't know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hug.
Mr. Koozie, happy Tuesday afternoon to you.
Matt Koozie, Law Department.
Could we amend this resolution today to include a stipulation that if it is not granted to be a waiverable offense, it will not be enforced?
I would have to advise against something like that. We can't be putting conditional statements into an ordinance. I think that's beyond a legislative function or something that can be put into an ordinance. You can't say, "This ordinance will go into effect unless the courts approve it."
Okay.
That wouldn't be appropriate.
Next question. We could always rescind this once, if it's passed at a later date, we could rescind it.
Of course, the council can rescind that.
We could vacate it.
Yes, that happened recently where the council had to void out all of our weapons ordinances because of the state legislature.
Okay. Well, I will go on record to say that I will personally vacate this order if the Supreme Court does not make it waiverable in a reasonable amount of time.
I agree with that, and I think what we're talking about here is just amending item 41(c) from the 250 down, or from the 500 to the $50. And I think we're all supportive of making that a waiverable offense and would support Mr. Koozie and Mr. Simp's efforts to do that. And should that not be successful, even though we all think it would be, I would second your motion to then not do this ordinance. Mr. Hug?
And just another point, that we would have 90 days to get that back from the Supreme Court before this ordinance even takes effect.
That's correct.
Because it would not take effect till August 1st.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Harding?
I hope I misunderstood what you said when you were making a general statement about the unanimous support of the floor amendment.
I thought you indicated your support for the 500 down to 50, but if you didn't, that's fine. We're speaking to the floor amendment now only, which is reducing the fine. There's no further lights on that floor amendment, so there's a motion, a second, to approve the floor amendment to 41(c). Roll call.
Hug? Johnson? Milton?
Yes.
Rowe? Bagley? Harding? Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed, 5 to 2.
So, it amends the amendment of the whole 41(c) by changing the fine level. We're now on 41(c) as amendment of the whole. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
If Mr. Hug would like to have any comments on it before, I'd certainly yield to him, but if not, I'll go.
I just want to take the opportunity to amend the resolution has a hole to item number c?
Yeah, move amendment of the whole, item c as amended.
As amended, correct.
I'll second that. Mr. Harding?
Thank you. I just, I thought maybe you were going to have some other comments on that, Mr. Hug. So, that's what, I was offering you the opportunity to do that as well as make the motion. But I'll pick up some of what I think Councilmember Milton said a few minutes ago, or some of the concerns I have with this as well, too. And I think here we talked about, just a couple of minutes ago, someone floated the idea of another amendment to this. And I just think, I hate to use the old phrase of, you know, "This cake needs to be baked a little longer," but I truly think this cake needs to be baked a little longer. I think there are some unintended consequences as we continue to add amendments to this in order to, you know, kind of address or satisfy some of the issues that come up along the way. For example, I think it is kind of a bit amusing to me that an abandoned or a stored vehicle, if you will, has more rights than a properly licensed vehicle. That being that if it's, someone's gone through the process of having a running vehicle, has it properly registered and plated. But if you didn't, if there were expired plates or hadn't been tagged in a long time and just stored on a property, you've got, once you're tagged with that, you've got 10 days to cure that process. Where, in this case, if this ordinance is passed, that you have a $50 fine, and then you have the court costs on top of it. So, again, I think that's something that needs to be thought more through. I had some questions as related to Chapter 55 at Pretty Council today and whether or not this would be in conflict with our current code. And I think it still is, even though there are exempted days in this proposal being that these holidays, you're still in violation of the code on those days, I believe. I'll ask for Mr. Koozie to verify that.
Matt Koozie, Law Department, I would agree that there are inconsistencies between this criminal offense and what the zoning code currently requires with regard to hard-surface driveways and paved parking paths.
Okay, thank you. I do applaud Mr. Hug for bringing, this is obviously an issue that's not unique to just one area of town, but quite frankly, it's concentrated in, you know, probably east of 72nd Street, but certainly not just in that area. And I, as I said, I applaud him for trying to tackle this issue. But in order for me to support this, I think it needs to be, there needs to be more attention to detail paid on this and details worked out. So, at the risk, I don't want to belabor some of the other items that I think were raised earlier. I just, I think this needs a little more time, a little more consideration. So, I will not be supporting it today. If there were a motion to lay over or place on file for a later date, I would certainly be in support of that.
Thank you. Mr. Hug?
Mr. Harding, I respect you greatly and value everything you have to offer in the way of opinion and advice. However, I will disagree with you that junk or abandoned vehicles would have more rights than licensed vehicles because those vehicles can be towed. They can be impounded. And you'd have to go down to the impound lot, pay the tow fee, pay the storage bill. And before you could get that vehicle out, you would have to be properly licensed and insured. So, there's a great penalty if it's enforced. So, I guess we're going to have to agree or disagree on how you look at it and how I look at it. That doesn't mean I don't respect you, because I do respect you.
Mr. Rowe?
Thank you, Mr. President. I had some, I was going to bring up that Chapter 5-ish, or 55 as well. I think there is some confusion on it, and, I mean, I like the ordinance. I think I would be supportive of it, but I, what I'm hearing from us collectively, and this is just my opinion, not putting words in anybody's mouth, but this ordinance, if we pass it today, doesn't take effect until August 1st. It seems to me if we did some sort of a layover or put it on file with a date certain, we could bring it back the end of July, maybe the middle of July. That would give us some time to rework all of the inconsistencies that we've talked about, the confusion that we've talked about. And we could adopt it like we do other ordinances effective immediately, once it's voted on, and we would be in the same place that we are now. But I, I mean, I don't want to put words into Mr. Hug's mouth either. I mean, it's his ordinance, he brought it, and I would hate to step on him and make that motion, but I would sure feel more comfortable if we did something like that. And I don't think it changes the outcome at all. It gives us more time to flush it all out, flush it all out, and have a better understanding. So, that's where I am today.
Thank you. Mr. Harding?
Thank you. Actually, there were a couple of additional items I did want to raise. And first of all, I appreciate Mr. Hug's comments, and my example of the, obviously, cars don't have rights by themselves, but, I mean, I was just trying to make a bit of a tongue-in-cheek example of, you know, you have a 10-day right to cure on those abandoned or stored, unlicensed or not registered vehicles, rather than being cited immediately for this violation. I'm going to violate my own HIPAA, I guess not requirements, but I recently had a hip replaced. And as such, I was, they gave me a temporary handicap parking placard. And I don't know the answer to this, and I know you shouldn't ask questions that you don't know the answer to, but I do know at least on the temporary handicap placard, and this would exempt those where placard, for handicap placards being properly displayed. It said that when I am not moving, that placard is not supposed to hang from the mirror. It's supposed to be taken off. So, I don't know if you know the answer to this, Mr. Koozie. I'm getting a not no, but I think, so to my point...
I'm not familiar with the ins and outs of handicap parking other than if you don't have a tag, you can't park in the spot. If the tag doesn't belong to you, you can't have it. And if it's expired, you're not supposed to use it. That's kind of sums up my knowledge.
Okay. I would tell you, I don't, my question in part was, I don't know if there's a difference between a temporary and a, which is a red tag versus a blue tag, which is a permanent handicap parking placard. But my point is, again, going through this, if the, one of the exemptions is for a properly handicap-placered car, if that's, if it's not visible from the street or from someone being able to approach it, if it's in the glove box or... or, again, I just think that's one of, that's one of the things. The other is, I know we talked a little bit about, I think it was, if you had a gravel driveway before, it was installed before 1977, that you would be grandfathered in under the original. Now, this, this again, that's another, I think, exemption that was, that was, that's being contemplated in the ordinances as proposed. I mean, what, I don't know if this has been considered, but I, and what if someone were to go out and just gravel that area tomorrow, or, I mean, could they start parking on it then? Again, I just, I think this needs a little more time to kind of carefully consider the implications of all these. It's a lot harder to unwind it if we were to pass it today, I think, in the future. I see that as even more challenging, so I just, I want to do it right, it's an issue that we need to address, and I want to do it right.
Thank you. Ms. Melton.
Oh, thank you. Actually, I had put my light on just to call attention to the fact that an unregistered vehicle, actually, you get a notice in 10 days, so you don't just get it towed right away. Right, and so technically, your original statement where an unlicensed vehicle has more rights on the property than the registered vehicle is actually somewhat correct because you don't get that 10-day opportunity, you can get an immediate ticket if your vehicle is registered and current versus if your vehicle is not registered. And to me, that, I just, I can't imagine giving, actually creating an ordinance that gives a benefit to somebody who doesn't register their vehicle. So again, that's why I'm going to have to vote no on the ordinance, although, you know, I'd like to say to everybody out there, if you're literally just parking your big, your car in your front yard for no other reason and it's just junking up the neighborhood, don't do it, you know? Be kind to your neighbors, there are some things that we just need to do because you just know you shouldn't do it, you shouldn't, you shouldn't have to have a law in place that makes you go to court or pay a ticket, you know? Let's do the right thing and be kind to our neighbors and help beautify our city, and, you know, those are little things that we can do. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Hug.
There are existing statutes and ordinances that say your vehicles must be plated and you must have insurance. And I believe there's this ordinance and a statute that says you can't park a inoperable vehicle on your property. So there's plenty of ordinances that speak to that directly, but what I'm trying to do is to stop the deterioration of our neighborhoods. And we can beat this to death, and, you know, there's plenty of cliche phrases we can throw out there about cakes, there's also one about too many chefs, but the end of the day, you know, this is a response to the numerous complaints I've had from constituents, anytime I'm in the public, the first thing out of people's mouths is, when's the city going to do something about people parking in the yards? I've had current law enforcement officers ask me, when is the city going to do something about it? And if not now, when? So it's, it's either, there's enough votes to make this happen or there isn't, and if there isn't, thank you for your time, if there is, thank you for your votes.
Thank you. There's no further lights, there is a motion, a second, to approve 41(c) as amended. Roll call.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson. Melton.
No.
Rowe. Bagley.
Aye.
Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed four to three. Item 42, a resolution to approve the supplemental agreement to the Public Highway Overpass Agreement with Union Pacific Railroad Company for the 72nd Street at D Street Bridge Replacement Project.
Public hearing and vote on number 42 is today, proponents please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion? Motion, a second. Roll call.
Hug. Johnson. Melton.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Johnson Epstein. Item 43, an ordinance levying a special tax and assessment for sidewalks in District Number SWR 2023-01.
Public hearing on number 43 is today, proponents please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 44, an ordinance to authorize the issuance of a purchase order to Univar Solutions USA Inc. in the estimated amount of $629,850 for sodium bisulfite bulk shipments.
Public hearing on number 44 is today, proponents please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 45, an ordinance to authorize the issuance of a purchase order to DPC Industries Inc. in the estimated annual amount of $1,903,480 for the purchase of sodium hypochlorite bulk shipments.
Public hearing on number 45 is today, proponents please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 46, an ordinance to authorize the issuance of a purchase order to Garrett's Lawn Service for Maintenance at Hanscom Park.
Public hearing on number 46 is today, proponents please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 47, an ordinance to accept the bid from Nebraska's Best Lawn and Landscape LLC for mowing of the Missouri River Flood Levy in the amount, in the annual amount of $39,125.
Public hearing on number 47 is today, proponents please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 48, an ordinance to vacate a portion of Douglas Street right-of-way within Cedar Knoll subdivision, planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number 48 is today, proponents please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 49, an ordinance to approve a major amendment to the Shadow View Village Mix-Use District Development Agreement, planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number 49 is today, proponents please.
You guys may work hard around here. Donnie R. Johnson, the Johnson Ed Quest Foundation, and Northam Hall Concerned Citizen Foundation. And I noticed one thing, all you guys was voted in office other than Mr. Hug. Remember this word, warrant, before you go on someone's property.
Any other proponents to number 49? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 50, an ordinance to accept the bid from Vermont Systems to provide PayTrack payment processing service for the Parks Department.
Public hearing on number 50 is today, proponents please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 51, an ordinance levying a special tax assessment for Litter Removal Group 2024-04.
Public hearing on number 51 is today, proponents please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 52, an ordinance levying a special tax assessment for Weeds Group 2024-05 is amendment of the whole request by the Law Department.
Public hearing on number 52 is today, proponents please.
Oh, never mind.
Thank you. Seeing none, are there any opponents to number 52? Public hearing is closed.
Item 53, an ordinance levying a special tax assessment for Weeds Group 2024-06.
Public hearing on number 53 is today, proponents please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 54, an ordinance to transfer $208,843 in the 2024 budget from the Wage Adjustment Account to the Police Department.
Public hearing on number 54 is today, proponents please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 55, an ordinance to amend Chapter 20, Article 5, Division 1.5 of the Omaha Municipal Code entitled Sexual Offenders to Add a Definition of Childcare Facility and amend the definition of sexual predator and to include licensed daycare facility as a prohibited location of residence for sexual predator.
Public hearing on number 55 is today, proponents please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 56, an ordinance to approve a purchase and sale agreement with KCGS Saddle Creek LLC for the purchase of a public parking facility.
Public hearing on number 56 is today, proponents please.
Good afternoon. Jacqueline Morrison with the City of Omaha Mayor's Office, here to answer any questions that you may have. There were also some questions this morning at pre-council about the layout of the development, so I asked the developer to come and be able, be available for questions.
Thank you. Other proponents?
Hi, Jay Lund, Greenslake Development, 3555 Farnham Street. I'm here representing KCGS LLC, which is the development entity that will be constructing this parking garage, so if you would, I'll give you kind of a little preview here. So just to kind of orient you to the site, this here, this is Saddle Creek Road. Here, this is, everything to the east of this is the Med Center. Can't use my left hand that well. This building right here is the existing Catalyst Project, which is a TIF project that, this is just kind of a little refresher of that project, which is currently underway, which will be directly across the road from this parking garage. That's a refresher on that, it's 170,000 square foot adaptive reuse of the former Omaha Steel Castings building into an innovation hub. So that's this building here, and then this is the garage site, which is immediately north of that, but then also adjacent to the core building, which is under construction now, right on the corner of Farnham and Saddle Creek. This is a rendering of the north facade of the parking structure, so that's the, I'll show you in a minute here, but that's the only facade of the garage that will be exposed as the, the way that the garage is designed is it'll be wrapped by future development, similar to the mercantile down on, that Heinz did down on the Con Egger campus. And then this sort of explains, this is a little bit of a better explanation of that as well, so again, up is north, this is the Catalyst Project, the garage sits here, which this is the north kind of facing facade, and then that allows for the rest of the entire garage project to be, to be wrapped, as they call it. So it's a 750-stall garage that will be owned and managed by the City of Omaha and Park Omaha, and will be a big necessary step for what we're doing at Catalyst and for the continued Saddle Creek development, and I'm here to answer any more questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Hug.
Motion to approve?
Okay. Light was on by mistake? Okay, no problem. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Jay, can you come up? Thanks.
Yep.
Appreciate you coming down today.
Yeah.
You and I met several, God, it seems like a long time ago, but you had shown me the plans that you presented today, so I appreciate you coming down because when you explain it to me, we have a Mort Meadows meeting in my neighborhood here in April, in a couple weeks. These are good things that we can present and also to the public. As I live three blocks from this, as you know, I feel the headaches of the great price of progress going on, on the development there, so the parking garage, you said it was 750 stalls?
Correct.
Okay. I'll let you off the hook for now, and if Jaclyn's back there, I got a couple of questions for Jaclyn.
And I'll say most of the headache is on Leavenworth and Saddle Creek.
You can share the headache.
Not necessarily our part.
That's all right. Jaclyn, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
There were some questions in pre-council this morning on, just can you clarify how this is being paid for, the $30 million for this 750-stall garage? How is it being paid for?
Yeah, absolutely. So this parking garage is actually part of the interlocal agreement that we have with UNMC from 20, end of 2021, and part of that agreement was that we would build a parking garage as part of their project next in their Saddle Creek expansion. So this is the garage that was referenced for the public parking facility there, and in those documents, we had also outlined that in order for us to be able to build the garage, we would need to generate the revenue to pay for it, and so the garage actually will generate enough revenue to pay for itself. We had an independent consultant, which was Walker Consultants, do an analysis of the area, looking at the office demand, the retail demand, as well as the UNMC demand on the garage, and so with the rates that they've proposed and that we'd be looking at, this garage would actually generate enough revenue to pay for, pay for itself.
Okay, and it's not going to take money from maintaining roads in the city, is it?
No, not at all. This will be part of our parking enterprise, and so everything from here will be run through the, whatever revenue that parking generates allows us to be able to purchase the garages and pay for them.
Okay, and it's, just for the record, it's not going to take money from law enforcement or public safety?
It will not take any money from any other place in the city, in fact, it'll generate funds to pay for itself.
Parks, planning, library included?
Everything, it won't take money from any other parts of the budget.
Thank you, Jaclyn, for coming down today.
Thank you. Mr. Rowe.
So I'll just ask one additional question since Mr. Bagley didn't ask. So there's a not to exceed $30 million price tag, and I know that concrete costs have never been more expensive than they are today. What happens if we have a gap? Who pays the additional dollars? Because we're at $40,000 a stall, at this, at 30 million for 750 stalls, who pays the gap if it, if it goes to 35 million or 40 million?
Our purchase agreement with the developer is for $30 million, and so the agreement that you are signing is they will build a garage and that's the amount that we will pay, and we're not agreeing to pay anymore.
That's what I wanted to hear.
Oh, well.
Yeah, I'll just add to that fact. It should, it, it's sort of, it's a, it's a one-way agreement as a developer, so should there be savings, the city would enjoy those, should there be overages, the developer will enjoy those.
All right, thank you. There's no further lights. Adam Clerk.
Next is executive session.
It's now the council's intention to go into executive session, in which we will only discuss labor negotiations, is there such a motion?
Thank you.
I'll second. Roll call.
Hug. Johnson. Melton.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Council is going to executive session at 4:07. Motion passed seven to zero. Council is going to executive session at four oh seven.